Motion for additions to those minutes.
Motion to approve those minutes?
Aye. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. First item we have this evening is Decatur Downtown Plan. We hired Kristy Sturz of Sturz Public Management to assist us in this effort, and she's here tonight to give us a draft of where we're at, basically. Hey, could you make-- is this the mic on here? Okay. Kristy, if you want to come up, yeah, please. You can stand or sit. Thank you.
Stand up for her, please.
Yeah, just right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Kristy Sturz, Sturz Public Management Group. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you this evening about the draft of Decatur Downtown Plan. Just to give you a little bit of a background about the plan, this past spring, council approved funding to put together a plan for downtown Decatur. It may seem a little bit like, you know, we've done the strategic investment plans, what's the need for this type of thing, and then just, I guess, differentiate what the difference is in the plan. This type of a plan is something that would be required if you want to go forward with funding through OKRA for a streetscape grant or for a facade grant. It's required that you have engagement by your Main Street, that you be a Main Street community and have engagement with your Main Street group as part of the development of this plan. So regardless of seller or not, this would have been a requirement to have in place moving forward. It's also a requirement to have a revitalization plan in place for the Second Street lost housing to be able to score optimal points as they're moving forward with their competitive application, which is due in November. So there are some different elements that OKRA kind of prescribes that they want to see in the plan, and there are also elements that we discussed with you as a community that you wanted to see that was specific to your needs. What I have given you is just an overview. There is a full PDF draft of the plan.
It's this thick when you turn it on.
I think, what, a couple hundred pages?
Yeah.
And I did give Melissa a link to that. Will that be on the city's website as of tomorrow?
It will be on the city's website tomorrow, and we can email it out to whoever wants that.
Okay.
Okay. So what I'd like to do, I guess, is just give you an overview of everything that's included as far as the general table of contents. What we did is looked at, well, first of all, developed a planning advisory committee, and this committee comprised the Main Street Executive Board as well as other key stakeholders in the community and city representatives. Mayor Schultz, Cam Collier, Larry Ish, Wes Tunsen, Diana Macklin, Brad Martz, Connie Mayer, Max Miller, Tony Murray, Melissa Norby, Anne Razzo, Wiley Sturz, and Phyllis Whitright. And if I've missed someone, please let me know. So throughout this process, we've met with this group a few times and also had a, in May, had a public input workshop where we received information from the public in regards to streetscape design, building facade improvements, as well as public art improvements. So when we looked at the overall area of the downtown, what we did is there's the larger downtown area that was taken into consideration, and this pretty much goes from Jackson to Adams and from Seventh Street over to the river. We also went on the other side of the river, included the nature preserve and Riverside Center as it relates to the connectivity to the downtown. We also had kind of a core focus area that really kind of replicated what your strategic investment plan was for stellar communities that went from Jackson to Jefferson and from the Monroe Street Bridge over to Third Street. So we had some more concentrated look at that specific area, and that in part was to keep costs down in addition to, I guess, just provide a more focused look to that specific area. So some of the things that we looked at in regards to existing conditions, we looked at the history of the community, the historical nature of the downtown, what some potential historic districts might be. You are not a national-registered historic district at this point in time, but you are eligible to become one, so that would be, you know, one of the recommendations in the plan, is you may want to move forward with that. It may present you with other opportunities as you go for grants and things down the road. We also looked at, there has been some survey work that the Main Street Committee had already done that we reviewed, looked at the workshop, looked at other plans that were in place as we looked at existing conditions. We also looked at market conditions, so we pulled a database that's called ESRI, and they do a really good job of looking at a radius of your downtown to understand what the demographics are, what your populations are, household income levels, and those types of things. They also pull out something that I think is kind of interesting called a tapestry segmentation. And what that means is they kind of characterize your community. I'm just going to read a couple things, I think they're kind of interesting. Eighty percent of the area within the downtown within a quarter mile, this is how they kind of typify, residents in this segment live primarily in low-density, settled neighborhoods. The households are a mix of married couples, families, and singles. Many families encompass two generations who have lived and worked in the community. Their children are likely to follow suit. The manufacturing, retail trade, and healthcare sectors are the primary sources of employment. This is a younger market, beginning householders who are juggling the responsibilities of living in their own or new marriage while retaining their youthful interests in style and fun. So it's just kind of interesting how they can kind of pull that together, and so we've been able to include some of that kind of information in your market analysis that can help you form opinions about how you move forward to get business and to locate within your downtown and what the market might be able to support there. We included a section on economic development. There's a strong interest in, you know, as you mentioned, your workforce development initiatives, but within the downtown, the concept of the Second Street lost and the, I want to call it, the coworking. I'm missing--
The business accelerator.
Yeah, coworking space, business accelerator, those types of things. So we talk about some of these different innovative concepts that communities have used to develop their downtown. We have a section in there that focuses on business retention and expansion and how you can go about just reaching out and bringing those new businesses into your community, just kind of the steps that go into that. So that's kind of that area. We also talk about some differences in approaches. There are some things that communities can do, that they're allowed to do through the state of Indiana. One is to establish an economic improvement district. You may have heard of downtown Fort Wayne has a business improvement district, and these are when the commercial businesses kind of initiate, they get so many people to sign in to levy, I guess, a tax or a fee on themselves that goes into a pot to help sustain efforts within their downtown. It's not something that, you know, you have to do, it's just an opportunity of a tool that you could do. There is also riverfront development districts that the state of Indiana has passed. I know Fort Wayne is looking at that right now, but there's a lot of other communities that have implemented that, and it's kind of tied to the alcohol beverage permits and the quota that's allowed there, and it's kind of to generate more people, more restaurants and so forth, to locate within a certain proximity to a riverfront. So those are just some examples there. In regards to the streetscape design and infrastructure improvements, the front page of the cover gives you a general idea of what that overall master plan looks like, but you'll see from the photo, it's showing streetscape improvements pretty much from the Monroe Street Bridge over to Third Street with a dynamic intersection at the crossroads of Monroe and Second. And then also includes, these little lines right here are showing potential alleyway improvements. And then this area right here is Madison Street, is considering looking at an event plaza for that area that would go from Second over to First. The thought is that you might be able to do something kind of unique with the sculpture tour. The thought isn't to limit the sculpture tour to that area. I know they like to move their sculpture around, and the streetscape would be designed in a manner to enable that to occur, but it might be nice to have an event space that is, you know, you can designate for that specific purpose. Whether or not it would be closed off or not would really kind of depend on the funding that you would go after for that. This might be an initial first good project for an OKRA grant. You can get up to $400,000 for that through their normal rounds. That application is due in June. But it also draws people from Second Street into, towards the riverfront, and so as you are developing that area, it's just a good linkage between the two. And you'll see this area is also showing a parking lot, which is at the current location of the Shaker Building. So you would be removing a blighted structure, creating some additional parking a little bit closer to the downtown. It may take some of the parking away from the riverfront. That's kind of up to you, how you want to design that, and you may not need this much parking. You may want to include a little bit more of a green space or a place for a farmer's market or something like that integrated into the final design there. The thought, the concept of the downtown streetscape is that it is a downtown gallery. It's building off of the momentum that you've had from your sculpture tour and, you know, really kind of elevating that from a branding standpoint and just an ability to kind of showcase some of the unique things that you have going on in your downtown. We've also have a, we've looked at a variety of things, touched on. There are some needs to look at your parking. We didn't do an in-depth parking analysis as part of this plan, that wasn't part of the scope, but it was identified as a next step need to, and Cam had already done some of the legwork through Greater Decatur to identify what is in place, but to then kind of come back with recommendations as far as policy changes and things that need to occur, that would be a next step type of thing for the plan or for the Main Street group. There's a public art component that's included in the plan as well, and this is kind of a unique thing, not all downtown plans have this, but given the momentum with your sculpture tour and the catalyst that it's provided, this is something that was funded in part by a private source that really kind of looked at, you know, if you are going to integrate public art and it's something that the city is going to want to invest in, aside from the sculpture tour, what would that look like moving forward? And so Public Art Practice did this component, and I guess I should say the streetscape design was done by Jones Petry Borsensky, which are land, I don't want to say land--
Land--
Land, that land group, previously Landland Group. So anyway, there was, at the downtown meeting, there was kind of a visualization session where Dee Booty with Public Art Practice went through a variety of types of sculpture, and people ranked them as far as what their interests were, and came up with some overall recommendations of it being a more traditional-type sculpture, figurative-type of art, and so forth. He also was a kind of a recommendation of what are some of the top sites that you may want to invest as a city, and the Monroe Street Bridge was number one as a gateway, as well as the Pocket Park or Founder's Park, the Five Points Intersection, and the riverfront. There were also some recommendations for overall gateways that you may want to consider moving forward, like the North Gateway and Thirteenth Street coming in into the downtown. There was a facade assessment, and this was, I don't know how many pages, but a lot of detail that went into, you know, looking at some individual buildings about what could be done to, you know, bring back the historic character, but also just, you know, make upgrades to the downtown. This is something that could be useful as you're implementing your facade program that some of the property owners can refer to as potential ideas as they're preparing their projects. We also include a section on cultural and social analysis. This is a requirement from the OKRA outline. We didn't do a lot of research in this because you've already done other plans that have really kind of looked in the vibrant community plan and so forth. And then the organizational management, which is really kind of focusing on Decatur Main Street. They already have their committees. They have an organization committee, a promotions committee, a design committee, and an economic restructuring committee. And when did you actually form?
Over a year ago?
Year. Year, year and a half ago, okay. And they have since-- Okay. And have since become a 501(c)(3) organization. When they had first organized, they had developed work plans, and there was also simultaneously the stellar communities work going on. So one of the goals is really kind of to bring everybody into alignment about moving forward with the downtown initiative, but also as we're further, they are further along, you know, what is it that they want to be doing with their committees? So the overall action plan then outlines a number of ideas that each committee can focus on, or it may be the city of Decatur, not just the committee itself. I won't go into all of the details, there's a lot here, and I do want to say, I think some of the committees were maybe a little overwhelmed by the number of potential action items that were included. This is a plan, it's not an ordinance, it's not a dictation that, you know, everything's going to happen, but it's a roadmap, and it's something that people can use to implement, and it's meant to be implemented over ten-plus years, so there are things that you can be working on and moving forward. And I would recommend coming back and reevaluating the plan every year or two to see what you've checked off, what doesn't make sense, and so forth.
Yeah.
Do you want me to go through any of the action items, or is that pretty much--
I think you've given a great summary of where we're at. Really, it's all on that first page on the appendix. Kind of reminds me of years ago, 2010, when we went through our comprehensive plan. We hired a firm to come in and help. The comprehensive plan hadn't been updated since a long time, but so we updated it. The same process is what we used, I think, so. What this entails then is we need to have this in place to qualify for grants, is basically what you're saying, right?
For some of the more substantial ones.
Grants coming up, so, yeah. So what this is, again, this is a draft, and I'd like to give at least a week for people to have questions, please call us, call Melissa and I, and we'll try to answer your questions, but we need to adopt this. So I'd say we're going to have a special meeting on October 27th, Tuesday, October 27th, at 5:00, and the adoption of this plan is basically the only item on the agenda, so. Gives us a week for anybody that wants to ask any questions or wants to review the plan. We have a copy of it here, so, and Melissa will put it on our website, so anybody has a question, they can look it up, so. Council, any questions for Kristy?
Just having our earlier conversation, you're doing the financial plan as well. When I look at this and I see, like, City of Decatur and the dollar sign, that is all built into the bigger financial plan?
Yes.
Is one of the things, so--
Yeah, and I know the capital improvement plan has taken a little bit longer, but it's been one of those things that, whether you got stellar or didn't get stellar, is really going to make a huge difference on that community development section, and so that will be presented in November and will really flesh out what those different elements might be.
Yeah. I think that--
They tie together, the capital improvement plan and this Decatur revitalization plan, they really tie together, so.
We just had a, we had a question earlier about where exactly are the funds going to come for any First Street property acquisitions and what would be the budgeted amount that's in here, that's all built into the capital improvement plan.
Which we'll have at the end of November, roughly.
Yeah, we've gotten all of our information from all of the departments and recently had a meeting where we kind of hashed out the community development piece. Now Phyllis and I need to kind of get our heads together and make sure that it makes sense from a cash flow standpoint, so that's kind of where we're at with that.
So I may have came into this a little late, but why are we adopting this plan? What was the point of adopting this plan?
We adopted the plan so we can qualify for some other grants that are coming up. That's the main reason we have to have this plan, the streetscape plan, you know? If we do a streetscape grant application, what are the requirements that they have in a downtown plan in place? I think you have to have a Main Street group in place, things like that.
And I think it's an endorsement from council that we agree with the strategic direction moving forward.
It doesn't necessarily say that you have to do everything in this plan, it just--
It's not an ordinance. Do you have a resolution in, well, anyway, resolutions are, they don't have the teeth of an ordinance, it's not considered a law, it's more of a guideline and that you say that collectively we have this vision moving forward.
The comprehensive plan had different areas designated. There was a Thirteenth Street, there was the riverfront, or the riverfront corridor, railroad corridor, the downtown area, and so when we go to stellar and the strategic investment plan, it was, okay, let's focus on one specific area and how the elements work together, and this is even another refined level that says, okay, with these projects that you have identified, let's put the, you know, the meat on the bones, what is this going to cost, what specific areas, you know, instead of just saying, hey, we're focusing on the downtown, well, this street to this street, and here's the cost.
Similar to a comprehensive plan, there are things that the plan commission used to base their decisions upon, but the legal document is the zoning ordinance, and that passed, you know, that's based on the comprehensive plan. So not that you have an individual ordinance that's going to support this, but, you know, as you implement individual projects, you'll go through that process.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? All right, well, Kristy, thank you very much. I know you've got to drive back to Chair Busco, so you're more welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but if you want to go, we understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So there's no action on this plan tonight, it'll be next meeting on the 27th at 5:00 is when we'll act upon this plan. Okay, next item. At the last meeting, we passed ordinance 2015-14, which is promotion of tourism. It's up for third and final reading if we so desire.
Make a motion, please, ordinance 2015-14, and its third reading by short title. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Who's our reader?
So Mr. Baker's not here, so I guess I have to read this. "At ordinance of the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes for promotion of economic development and tourism within the City of Decatur, Indiana, pursuant to IC 36-1-3 and IC 36-7-2-7."
Make a motion for passage or adoption of ordinance 2015-14. Second.
Motion second, I will call a vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Boe Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncam.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-14 is adopted. Whoops, excuse me. Another ordinance that was passed on first two readings was ordinance 2015-15, which establishes the salaries for the city employees for the year 2016. Before we get into that there, I did have a change. So I'd like to amend what was passed on the first two readings. City Hall, the amount for that is going to be $731.63. So it's changed to that. And the police department, janitorial for the police department is $344.30. So those are the two changes from what was passed at the last meeting. I'm not sure how we go about that, but maybe we should make, have a vote to accept those changes first before we go into the ordinance, so.
Do you need to make a change to go, just that it's up to, right?
Right, it says up to, so. I guess really you don't have to, because it says up to, so, yeah, as long as it's not more than, so. Really, we don't even have to do that. So, yeah, okay, so it's up for a third and final reading, 2015-15, salaries ordinance for 2016.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2015-15 in its third reading by short title. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Ordinance 2015-15, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the City of Decatur, Indiana for the year 2016.
Move for adoption of ordinance 2015-15 in its third reading. Second.
Motion second, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Boe Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncam.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-15 is adopted. Next item, we have ordinance 2015-16, which is a new ordinance, and this is for our two-year CEDAT plan. This is how, we're required by law to have a two-year CEDAT plan, and it's up for the years 2016 and 2017, so it's ordinance 2015-16. I can kind of give you some highlights on how the money is spent. Part A, we're going to spend $56,000 for flood mitigation grant. We're applying for flood mitigation grant with FEMA, so we're going to spend up $56,000. We'll spend up to $90,000, which is 13% of our city's distribution, to support the Adams County Economic Development Corporation, and then we spend $94,000 over these two years for promotion and development of economic development projects, including but not limited to economic incentives, acquisition of real estate, and infrastructure improvements. Over the two-year period, we also spent $100,000 on the city sidewalk program, and the majority of the money goes $660,000 for capital improvement projects. So that's in a summary of what we are saying for our two-year CEDAT plan. So it's up for, I guess, we can do two readings tonight and then adopt it.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2015-16 in its first reading by short title. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Ordinance 2015-16 by short title is a capital improvement plan for the City of Decatur for calendar years 2016 and 2017.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2015-16 on its first reading.
Motion second, I will call a vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Boe Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncam.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes. Move that ordinance 2015-16 be placed in its second reading by short title.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Ordinance 2015-16-- Ordinance 2015-16, a capital improvement plan for the city of Decatur for the calendar years 2016 and 2017.
Move that ordinance number 2015-16 be passed on its second reading.
Second. Motion second, I'll roll call vote, please.
Cam Carter.
Yes.
Boe Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham Camp.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes.
Move that ordinance 2015-16 be tabled until our next meeting on November 2nd for adoption at that time.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Next item I have is appointment to the park board, this would complete the term of Fred Schultz, who passed away, and I am appointed to mayor's appointment, appoint Dick Stimson. Dick Stimson will serve from today, October 20th, through December 31st of 2017, so we just need to make that a matter of record. Read the motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Melissa, you're up. Melissa here has Office of Community and Rural Affairs, OKRA, resolution.
Good evening, the city of Decatur is the lead applicant in Connect to Careers, is the partnership applicant for a grant to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs for the Workforce Development Program. The grant is for $220,000, there is a 24% local match, and we're lucky on the timing that the amount that the municipalities and the county have already committed to Connect to Careers can be used as the local match. Part of the application includes a resolution from city council that commits to two things. The first one is that you're authorizing the application on behalf of the city, the second is that local match amount, and to remind everyone, the local match is in the total amount of $74,000, $35,000 from Adams County, $25,000 from the city of Decatur, $8,000 from the city of Burn, $4,000 from the town of Geneva, and $2,000 from the town of Monroe. And again, this is money that has already been committed, if this grant were to happen to not be, if this grant were to not be awarded, this money is still in place by these municipalities to support Connect to Careers. Do you have any questions?
So, this grant application is due, I think you told me.
On Friday.
End of this week.
Yes.
We have the match funds, and Decatur's the lead agency here, it's not really a Decatur grant application, but we're the lead agency for all the others.
And Connect to Careers will be responsible for carrying out all the activities of the grant.
Okay, well, to me, this is what Connect to Careers was formed for, so this, we're trying to get a grant of some money to do some projects, so it's a great, great idea.
Resolution.
It's a resolution 2015-17.
Melissa, I think you also shared with us earlier in the Board of Works meeting that it's going to be awarded mid-November?
Yes, on November 17th, we will know the results.
And the funds?
Will be available to start spending in the first quarter of 2016.
Thank you.
Good. So we need a, what's our number? 2015-17.
To pass the resolution 2015-17.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motions carried. Thank you, Melissa. Up to my report, I just want to remind everybody, we do have a special meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, October 27th, at 5:00. I don't know what my, I put down a note here, I have no idea what it means, anyhow, we have a special meeting on October 27th, the item on the agenda is to pass the downtown revitalization plan, so, just reminder, also a reminder that our next regular scheduled meeting is being moved from November the 3rd to November the 2nd, so instead of November 3rd, Tuesday, it's going to be on November 2nd, a Monday, because of the election on the 3rd, so, same time, same place, so we'll have that. Want to remind everybody, we are having a town hall meeting tomorrow evening at Riverside Center, would like, love to see everybody attend that, it's Riverside Center from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, so town hall meeting, basically it's to review our stellar process, what we've done, what we've been told, and how we're going to move forward with the projects that we have included and so on, and Cam's been involved heavily in this, anything else you want to mention on that?
How, you know, we have representatives from the state, and also from the region there, just to share their perspective on how, certainly from the region, how our plan and our projects are being integrated into the regional cities initiative, as they see it, I mean, it sits right in with all that they're doing, and it's important for the region, so.
Good, so invite everyone to come on out tomorrow at 6:00 Riverside Center. We need to close Winchester Street from, Jeremy, where, we closing the Highway 27?
Military Drive to US Highway 27.
Military Drive, yeah, so, it's so they can repave the area where the water line went through, the sewer line, things like that.
You need to.
It's going to, it's going to be a lot better when we get that done, so. Also, we're having the after-hours on November, the after-hours meeting through the Chamber of Commerce at the police department on November 12th, so.
Excuse me, when you got closed?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's closed from October 26th through October 30th, it'll be closed that long.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Back to the after-hours thing?
After-hours is a chamber event where they have kind of like an open house, people come in, chamber members come in, and get a tour of a place, and maybe understand the facility, so it's going to be at the new police department, and that's going to be on November 12th at 4:00, from 4:00 to 5:30, so it's basically an open house, and people can see the new police station. I'd like to congratulate Cam Carter and his wife, Mary, on the birth of a new baby, Evelyn.
Jean.
Jean, mom and baby's doing fine, I hope?
Doing well.
How about dad?
Getting better.
(laughing) Not bad, so yeah, congratulations, that's always wonderful. I'd like to mention just real quickly, Max Miller, he's put on some events, you know, you hear these carriage rides and things, he's had an event down at the historical museums, and I, Matt, or Max, could you, how many people attended that, could you give us an idea? 300?
Well, just this weekend, yeah, there's like over 300 people.
300?
That means being on the.
That's great.
More than all of last, don't put that date with the old board members, right now, I get. (laughing) Well, last year.
In one weekend.
We're having a lot of activities going on, it's all decorated for Halloween, it's a haunted house, and I don't, I had to hit it off.
Well, that's great, I mean, that's wonderful, that's, I guess what we all want, we want people to come to Decatur, so.
Is somebody playing music there this weekend?
Oh yeah, the family of the Opera will be performing live this weekend on the Museum of Antique Oregon, on both Friday and Saturday.
All right, that'll be neat.
And you, I've been asking people, people are coming from Fort Wayne, Ossian, Van Wer, Flutten, Burn, they've been coming up, you know, to the museum, the last couple weeks.
Well, good, thanks for doing that, Max, we really appreciate you bringing, well, yeah, your group, bringing the people to Decatur, that's what we all want, so thank you. Department of Ed reports, Mike Mann, you just happened to be sitting in the wrong place, so what do you got?
Nothing, thank you.
Greg?
No, thank you.
Les?
Couple things, not allowed to burn in the city, so yard waste shouldn't be a problem in leagues, but in the townships, things are really dry, a lot of care should be taken. There were three field fires in the county today, around, Sandy Corn, two of them were started by the equipment that was operating in the field, so the conditions are really, really dry, pickups would turn down exhaust, come park them out in the field, let them set and run, the wind has, you know, yesterday the wind moved that across a pretty good-sized field, so people just need to really take care of burning out in the county, and farmers may, maybe want to do a little extra clean off and maintenance on the equipment, because it's, if you've been out, beans and corn are dusty, and very, it's very dirty, so be careful burning in the camp. Then our survival life program will start the first week of November at Safety Park, the first week we run all 4th graders from Adams Central and South Adams, and then the second week is all of North Adams, 4th grade, and a few of the parochials, and then the third week, we pick up a few of the other two parochials, but this is really our biggest fire prevention undertaking of the year, we'll do the survival life drill with about anywhere from 500 to 600 4th graders at Safety Park, and we're kind of a lead agency, we do get help from the other departments, but we put a lot of time and effort in this, and you've seen the United Way kickoff video this year, we were kind of highlighted in that video, and I'm pretty proud of that fact that we were highlighted in that video, and we think it saves lives, so.
Yeah, well, good.
That's what we'll be doing for two weeks in a row.
Thank you, Melissa. Nate?
Nothing, thank you.
And?
No.
Roger?
Just, they would like to report that the plan commission did get a final approval on AIG and Fleetwood RV repair lot out there that they're going to do, it's on the corner of Patterson and 13th Street, they had a little article in the papers, and they did get a final approval to go ahead with that project.
ARG.
Yeah.
(laughing) That's why you said AIG, I think it's ARG, that's fine, thank you, Roger. Jeremy?
Leaf collection did start this week, obviously it's a little slow, they're a little behind from past years, but we are getting it picked up.
Yeah, the leaves will come down pretty quick. Now, Dan?
Nothing.
Nothing? Melissa?
Nothing.
Did I miss anybody? Comments from council members, anything you want on your mind here, that you wanted to bring to our attention? Nothing? Comments from the public? Public? Anybody got anything? Thank you. Phyllis? I skipped over Tim, since he's not here tonight, so I'll go to Phyllis.
Make a motion, please, we debate it after that.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you.